And at this time, it is, I believe, 7:10. And so we will move to our second public hearing of the evening. And this is proposed local law number four of 2023 entitled, quote, "The repeal of opting out of licensing and establishment of retail cannabis dispensaries within the village of Webster," end quote. I'm going to, first of all, this evening, ask that the initial people who wish to address the board that live in the village speak first. You will come to the microphone, give your name, address. You will have three minutes to address the board. When all village residents have had the opportunity to speak, I will then move to those who are here from the town, if there are any, and they will have opportunity then to address the board. And after that, if there is anyone who in general has left, you may address the board as well. So at this particular time, I would ask that if there is anyone from the village who would like to address the board, that you come to the podium, state your name, address, and state your words, whatever you'd like to tell us or respond to us. Okay? At this point, it is over.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Katie Toldy, 33 Dunham Avenue. As most of you know, I'm a resident of the village having lived in our home on Dunham for 42 years. I'm a former village board member and now have served on the town board for 13 years as a councilwoman and now deputy town supervisor. I have also been active with WEN and serve as a liaison for them to the town board. I wear all these hats as I come to you tonight. When the village board actually ruled to opt out of retail cannabis sales before the town board took such action, and also did a stand on ruling out smoking and vaping in public parks before the town board, I applauded you. I respected you for taking a stand. I now ask why you would consider reversing the decision on opting out. What have you seen in the past 18 months that shows this would be a good thing for our village? New York State has mishandled the process for licensing. In the Finger Lakes area, it has been tied up in legislation, litigation, I'm sorry. No local licenses have been approved at this point. Where is the evidence that this is a good thing? And considering to opt in, you are well aware that it's a binding decision. You cannot change your mind and opt out again. I trust that you will consider zoning regulations if you move forward. Those are currently not in place. When you do this, I challenge you to find a location other than the Xerox campus within our 2.2 square miles that is not in proximity to a school, church, or childcare facility. Yes, I am aware that the sales of cannabis to minors is illegal, but we all know how that goes when an older sibling's friend is willing to make that purchase for you. Finally, as a member of WEN, the mission of the Webster Health Education Network is to create a positive, supportive environment for our young residents. It is critical to delay their exposure to addictive substances such as tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. Your responsibility includes creating a safe, supportive environment for all our village residents. I urge you not to reverse your decision. Do not consider the opt-in to allow retail cannabis dispensaries in our village. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ushel. I live at 110 Johnson Street. You've lived in the village for 34 years now.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
Ushel, U-S-C-H-O-L-D.
Thank you.
Yep. What she said. That can't be any better than that. But I just want to give you two experiences I had in the last two weeks in the village. Sitting at the red light right up here, my window down, wondering where the waft of marijuana is coming from, and I see the car in front of me being held out the window. I also see several teenagers walking down the street going, "Where's that coming from?" Two weeks later, I'm at the same light. I look at the car next to me, and they're passing a joint between each other. These people are driving cars. They're in the village. And then were teenagers walking down the street, probably didn't see that. I just ask you to consider our small little village and the effect something like this can have on it. And I'd ask you not to change your previous decision and to consider, don't consider taxes as part of this discussion. Sometimes money gets overridden, overrides things that it shouldn't override. So please just consider the overall effect on the village and probably the negative effect it's going to have. Thank you.
My name's Dan Ruhl. I can spell that for you if you might mean so. R-U-E-H-L-E. I'm a resident of the village. I live at 219 London Road with my wife, have for a couple of years now, not quite a few decades, but nonetheless. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. As a resident in this village who yesterday peeled a note that was stuck to my front door with unsubstantiated claims regarding the potential to open a marijuana dispensary, I'd like to stand here and say that I'm in favor of a legally operated dispensary here in the village and anger you may not have thought of. I've fought cancer over the last 10 years. And over my three cancer reoccurrences, I can attest to the positive impacts cannabis use has had on recovery and symptom relief. Prior to it being legal in New York State, I had to live with the fear and the uncertainty of unsafe, unregulated cannabis. People of all ages and demographics already use cannabis for all kinds of common ailments and symptom relief, and it would be of great benefit to many in the village to have safer, local, simpler access to cannabis products. With how much this topic has been discussed, petitioned for, and with how passionate those on both sides have made their case, I do wonder what benefit it would be to the village if we could bind together and work towards kind of more pressing, legitimate matters regarding this village and its residents. That's it. Thank you.
I live at 95 Hefner Drive. We've been there since 1977, and we've enjoyed our life in the village. Following the last meeting on the subject, I was curious of what the situation is in other towns in Monroe County as well as the state. Of the 31 municipalities in Monroe County, 13 allow dispensaries, 18 do not. For the state, 776 allow, 754 do not. One of the arguments presented at the last meeting was it would be more convenient and safer to buy the product in Webster rather than travel into the city. I would note that the neighboring towns of Rondacoy and Penfield allow dispensaries, so it's a very short trip to those towns. It would be hard to argue with the fact that the rollout of the New York State legalized marijuana law has not gone well. Criminals or relatives of criminals get preferences for licenses, growers have warehouses full of product they can't sell, farmers' markets are being considered as retail outlets, et cetera. Not something I would want my village or town to be associated with, at least at this time. First paragraph of an August 18 article in the New York Times summarizes it nicely. "Since New York State legalized marijuana two and a half years ago, its efforts to set up the industry has been a slow and bumpy ride." I would argue that the bumpy ride continues. With how badly the rollout has gone so far, how could anyone have confidence in revenue projections that have or will be made and how those revenues may or may not benefit the municipalities that opt in? In my opinion, it makes much more sense to take a wait-and-see approach. A municipality can opt in at any time, but once you're in, you're in, and you can't opt out.
Anyone else from the village who would like to address the board?
Richard Walder, 20 Elm Street. You didn't know how to spell that. I've been in the village longer than anybody here, probably. I've been here for 77 years. And for 77 years, we've had no marijuana, and I see no reason to do it now. There are, as Ben mentioned, the same people who said they want to do it here in Webster have said they're going to open a store in Penfield, they're going to open one in Fairport, and they're going to have one in Ontario. They mentioned this at one of the previous meetings. I strongly believe that it's too soon for us to opt in, if ever. Until we see the results of what's happening in other areas, we should stay to our nice, friendly little town and not bring marijuana here. I've also, we're going to make over $115,000 on this. Yet see no facts or figures as to what this total sales are going to be and how do we confirm what the, know or confirm what the total sales are going to be at this point. So the tax theory is out the window because we do not know. Okay, the other problem I see with this opting in, if we do it immediately, we are being foolish. As Ben mentioned, we have no zoning, same word, indeed. We have no regulations of any village regulations on this. We're depending 100% on state regulations. The village has to pass, at the same time they pass this, if they pass this, which I'm strongly against, rules and regulations controlling it. So as I said before, to put this back several months before we actually consider this is a good idea where we can see where the problems lie in other communities and we can put into effect what needs to be here to control it if we decide at that time to do it, which I sincerely hope we do not. Thank you very much.
I'm Lori Reynolds. I live at 138 Johnson Street. I'm a 50-year resident of the village of Webster. My husband and I raised all three of our children here. And I just want to review a few things with the village board. I'm sure they're going to remember some of this stuff. If there's one thing the village board should have learned from the very bad deal made with Monroe County Water, it should be to make sure that they are well aware of a full picture before making changes. It costs village taxpayers lots of unnecessary expense when the board decided to go to Monroe County Water, leaving a very valuable future moneymaker, Webster Water. We are still paying for meters passively, maybe they're paying more now, but we're paying for meters that were new at the time, that were given to Monroe County Water. And they end up recouping them, either reselling them or scrapping them. You know, Webster village taxpayers would have liked to recoup some of their money at that time. Now, years later, residents will pay the cost, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, recoup some of their money at that time, too. That was a bad negotiation. The wellfields in west Webster still remain uncapped and there. They had, something has to be done with them in order to sell it. This could have been part of the deal with Monroe County Water to negotiate having those wells then. That was $1 million back when that was taken place. You know that. Probably $1.5 million now or more. Okay, another bad negotiation. The old water tower, it was taken down by Monroe County Water. They had been bringing in income because it hosted a cell tower. That went too, and it can cost Webster residents more money when they get to replace the tower. These are just a few examples of not looking ahead, not seeing how good or bad will come to village residents from the changes. Tonight, once again, we see after opting out from having a marijuana dispensary, people are trying to make the board make a rushed decision, not knowing all the repercussions which come with this retailer. Has the board checked with other communities? Have they done this already to see the good and bad effects that has brought to their village or town? Are DUIs up? Are there more preventable accidents happening from driving under the influence? Is there more crime? What about secondhand smoke? Just what monetary motivation to residents is really realistic? Has this even been studied by the village? Let's look at the effects of marijuana on the body.
Excuse me. We are limiting this to three minutes, so if you have a conclusion?
Okay, let me just, the effects of secondhand smoke exposed to the body are immediate. It can produce harmful inflammatory respiratory effects within 60 minutes of exposure, which can last for at least three hours. What will the effects be to the surrounding area in regards to this? One-third of the village?
I'm going to have to ask you to stop. Are you in favor or are you not?
I would ask the village to continue to be voting apt out. Apt out.
I live at 76 Corning Park. We've been village residents since 1964, not quite 77 years. I would ask each of you board members, as caretakers of the village, that you think of the good of the village over whatever money it might bring. This, to me, is the crux of it all. Please do that. Please think of the good of the village and setting an example of what is healthy for our young people. Please prioritize that over whatever money coming in taxes. Thank you.
You don't have to speak into the mic. It's very powerful. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Rick Erblin. You know this fellow?
If you could spell it, that would be great.
E-R-P-Z and B-Y, L-A-N-D.
Thank you.
124 Avenue, we've been here 34 years. I don't have a lot to say, just a couple of things. I looked at this little thingy gap when we came in, and it's just interesting to me, just like the gambling, that all the money we're going to get in, part of it's going to be used to rehabilitate drug users or gamblers or whatever. So anyway, I am opposed to opting out. I mean, I want you to stay in. How do I say it? Keep it the way it is, in my opinion. Thanks.
I'm at 102 East Main Street, and I am also against opting out of this particular proposal for so many reasons, especially the fact that was just brought up about the need to rehabilitate what we would be bringing here. To me, the cost of that is lives, and I've already lost one in my family, and I don't want to see other people go through that as well. So please opt out of this.
If not, then I would open it to those who live in the Webster Town community, village
Hi, I'm Tracy Sidgus. I live at 15 Brighton Park in Webster. I also work at Xerox in the village. I am in favor of having a legal licensed dispensary, and I just want to say I'm so sorry for the loss of your family member, and that is my point today, is there is so much product out there, and like this gentleman said, people are smoking in cars before there's even a legal dispenser. Let's give the community a legal, safe product that's regulated by the state, that we're not going to keep losing people to laced drugs that they're getting from who knows where they're making it. So that's my point. Thank you.
Spell you the letter?
It's S-I-G-A-F-O-O-S. Thank you.
I'm Janine Sanger. I live at 82 Ticker Tavern Road. I'm also the director of the Webster Health and Education Network, and thank you for letting us speak tonight. One of the biggest arguments from the individuals that came to speak in favor of the dispensary was how well-regulated it is. We've learned that in Colorado, the enforcement division has failed to deduct an underage compliance check in more than 75 dispensaries in the state. In between the years, fiscal years of 2019 and 2022, the division failed to inspect 36% of newly licensed retail marijuana stores within one year of approving these licenses. Despite the official policy stipulating such stores would be checked within one year of licensure, the division also failed to check locations known to be risk factors, of which we already know we have here in Webster selling THC illegally. New York will not be any different than this. It will be more than they can manage. There will be a lack of oversight and enforcement, and underage teens will have access despite what anyone tries to promise. I want folks here to know that I'm not against small businesses. We are a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I worked with the bid on several projects throughout the year. What I am against is increasing retailer density of businesses selling cannabis in our community. Retailer density is the number of sellers in a certain area. What research has proven again and again is that as retailer density increases, so does youth use. Once the board goes to repeal the opt-in ordinance, there won't be just one cannabis retailer in Webster, there will be many. Important to note is that the tax revenue promised to the village will be negligible unless we have multiple cannabis retailers. I'm asking you as a Webster Village Board of Trustees, isn't the well-being of our youth more important than an unguaranteed promise of money, an almost guaranteed increase in driving under the influence, car crashes, and crime? You are in your role to do, you are in your role to do what is best for the residents of the village, and I thank you for your consideration.
Z-O-B-K-I-W. I live at 600 Shade Lane Circle. I was implored to speak based on some of the comments that are already made tonight. One of the big pieces that we keep saying is that we want to offer a safe option that doesn't have fentanyl in our products, doesn't have other contaminants in our products. And the paper we were handed today has a source saying licensed cannabis undergoes rigorous testing for contaminants in the sources from California cannabis testing regulations. New York State does not have any testing regulations yet. OCM has not made recommendations around what's going to be allowed, what's, how are they going to test it? There are no regulations on that yet. So I am imploring you guys to continue keeping us as opt-in out until New York State can come up with better testing regulations. What's that going to look like? What's going to be allowed? How often is it going to be tested? Until a lot of that stuff is a little clearer, I'm asking you to please consider opting out.
I'm Nicholas Vizio. I live at 852 Line Circle. I'm a new father. I have a three-month-old baby. I'm a CPA licensed in New York. I've had my CPA license for several years now. Have lived, grew up in Webster, lived in Webster, lived in New York City for 10, 11 years, have traveled the world. I don't smoke, I don't drink. My thought is that the volume of marijuana users in Webster, or the town of Webster, is not going to change regardless of whether there's a legal dispensary or there's not. I think the gentleman talked about someone smoking weed in the town. I think that's going to continue regardless. I think having the ability to have people have a safe avenue to get marijuana that is in place, that is resourceful, that's easy to get, that's convenient, is the right thing for our town. And I think it's very easy to go anywhere else from people that are selling, throwing it themselves, in other towns, in other communities. It just, to me, doesn't make much of a difference for whether it's in this town or someplace else. Obviously, having a granddaughter, having a fiance, we're going to raise our children to have good morals, have good things. I don't think smoking marijuana does that much different. I think alcohol is much worse. I think tobacco is much worse. I think sports betting could be a lot more addictive. So I think isolating marijuana as compared to these other vices is something that really should not be. Marijuana has health benefits. It's scientifically proven to be a good thing. Economically, being a CPA, there are tax benefits that can come from this. I build the model for them. I understand what that revenue can be, and I can see some long-term benefits for our community. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Spiezio, I live at twelve thirty-two Salt Road, and I'm in favor of this evening on the adult-use retail dispensary opening. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to discuss the topic. It's gaining significant attention, and it's sparked conversations and debates across the nation. It's important that we consider all the aspects before making a decision. But first and foremost, I'd like to emphasize that discussion about cannabis retail in Webster is not just about the recreational substance, it's about the economic, the opportunity, the responsible regulation, and potential benefits to our community. I think one of the most compelling reasons for opening the retailer is for the economic boost that can provide, although many of you have said that that's not, but I believe it is. Cannabis is a rapidly growing industry, and its legalization has led to significant revenue generation in various regions. And by allowing cannabis retailer to operate here, we can tap into that emerging market. The additional tax revenue that can be used to fund essential community services such as education, healthcare, infrastructure improvements, public safety, it can ease the burden on a lot of local taxpayers. So legalizing cannabis through a regulated retailer also allows us to control the substance's quality and ensure that it's not tainted with harmful additives like many of you have already mentioned. There's health benefits, and it's crucial to remember that the decision to open a cannabis retailer should be made with careful consideration of our community's needs and values. We can establish regulations and zoning laws that reflect our unique character and address concerns about location, signage. But in conclusion, the decision to open a cannabis retailer is complex, it requires careful examination, potential economic benefits, the ability to regulate, ensure safety, and impact on our community's values and identity. By embracing this opportunity with thoughtful planning and community involvement, we can reap the benefits while preserving the unique character that makes Webster special. And let us approach the decision with an open mind and commitment to what's best for our village and our residents.
Hello, I'm a fourth-generation resident of Webster from the Brushes and the Wall family. My name is Glenna Colapretti. I live at four forty Sundance Trail in Webster, New York. And I am...
Is that your last name?
Oh, sure, it's like Coca-Cola, C O L A P R E T E. Thank you. And I dutifully respect everyone that's gone before me, and what I'm gonna say is not meant to be offensive or debunk any of your perspectives. I just wanna extend my knowledge and experience in this room. So there are already licensees in the Finger Lakes region, I'm one of them. I received a first cultivation license, one of fifty-two in New York State. I'm also the first processor, one of fourteen. And my company's name is Glenna and Co. And if you go to glennas.com or glennascbd, you can read a little bit about it. We're pretty private and quiet, to be frank, in order to just build it and keep the safety as the market emerges. So I would like to address some of those components. I understand the misunderstanding about there not being licensees here because of the injunctions, but to be clear, that was only for the card license program, not for the cannabis cultivators or processors. There's quite a few of us that operate very successful, regulated businesses here. Happy to open the doors and have you come tour and see that. My farm and production is located in Rush, but I gather I live in Webster. I'm a Webster Chamber member, have been for years. In fact, the Webster Chamber gives my employees health benefits. I employ twenty-six to twenty-seven employees, albeit I have twenty right now on my farm since we're harvesting, hence my garb. So we're in the middle of a harvest, a legal harvest, that we are putting that product in the lab-tested environment. So right now, most of our products are in third-party lab testing, one of which is in Rochester, the city of Rochester, called Certainty Analytical Lab. It's a woman-owned lab, and that is registered by the state to conduct cannabis testing. I can show you my lab results if you're interested. There's also one in Buffalo. There are regs in place. I will say that I'm also a professor at Finger Lakes for regulations of cannabis cultivation. I also work hard with the state to help with workforce development. So we have placed multiple people in jobs and revenue and impact. So the towns and villages are already realizing some of those efforts. Statistically, across the country, if you look at other areas, yes, they've had their pitfalls, they've had their pros and cons. We've definitely seen that and tried to learn from that. The OCM, the state, have visited all those locales. They've written those best practices to try to minimize or mitigate that from happening here. Hence the labeling regulations that you can find in the ocmnewyork.gov. It lists all the labs that are legal, it lists all the packaging. It does not try to attract children to the packaging. There's no bubble font, so cookies would not be able to operate the way they have in other states. There's no neon packaging. Everything is child-resistant and highly geared, which I have a sample in my car that's going to a legal dispensary. Happy to show you that, can't let you hold it, 'cause that's not legal. But happy to show you the tamper-resistant element, the big warnings, the big THC, our license, et cetera. And there is a legal dispensary on East Ave that's operating as a showcase with other growers.
I'm glad that they have people.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I will summarize that quickly. There's also others that are opening up, and other towns have regs that you can replicate. You also already have alcohol regs that you can replicate that denote the nuisance laws of time matter in place. And I'll summarize the last part as far as property values increased by seven percent within a half a mile of the dispensary. I've seen scores of empty buildings in the Village. I think it would be great to have simpatico licensed elements come in and revitalize the Village of Webster. If there's anything else that you'd like to ask me after or thereafter, I'd be happy to answer. I'll close with cannabis is not a moral turpitude crime. For delivery is already here. People can already order cannabis legally who's delivered to the Village of Webster. And so it's not an opting component, it's already here. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Christina Spiezio, and I live at twelve seventeen Lionflower Drive, and I am in favor of licensed adult-use retail dispensary in the Village of Webster. I work in paid social media. I work at the largest independently-owned ad agency in the world. I previously worked at the largest publicly traded ad agency in the world, with my client being the third-largest holding company for alcohol beverages. I know firsthand how you can advertise these products to children. It's not allowed, there are age restrictions. Meta, TikTok, other platforms, they have restrictions where you can, your whole etiquette will be disabled. Everything will be put up against you. So the false claims, anything that you show someone physically using it, or anything like that, it's illegal. So nothing can be advertised to children. And I also wanna talk about the village bait shop across the street that does have those neon signs and things like that, because it's supposed to be attracting adults. But that is in our village, it's right there when there's parades and when there's Webster events, things like that. Kids can see that. This location would not be directly in the Village. It would be next to Salvatore's, far back from the street. There would be nothing that's attracting children. So I just wanna make that point clear. I'm also just, I would like you to consider these factors as the purpose of this product is to aid adults in their ailments what we've heard tonight from people that have spoken. So thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gabrielle McGrogan. I live at seven oh five Webster Road. I've lived in Webster my entire life. The only town I've ever left is for college, and I did come right back. Webster's my home and will always be my community. I have always loved the community that our town has created, and I always want what is best for our community. Which is why it's hard for me to understand why people in our community are against opening up a legally-regulated dispensary that so many people argue for taking cannabis so unsafely and unregulated. Before marijuana was legalized, I was skeptical. I never used marijuana, I wasn't sure about the pros and cons, so I had to do a lot of research when everything was legalized and to, you know, make my own conclusion. It is not very clear why cannabis was legalized. Opening up a dispensary does not create more people partaking it. What it does create is a safe and regulated way for people to continue to use it. It creates a way for people to continue to utilize marijuana in a safe manner while also getting products that are quality and untainted and unlaced. Opening a dispensary does not create a safer outlet or does create a safer outlet for consumers in our community to purchase marijuana over twenty-one. It is inaccurate to think that people will not partake in marijuana if this dispensary is not approved. They just consume cannabis unsafely and at home and unregulated, not knowing where else they're getting it from, and traveling to go get it as well. It is hard for me to understand how people can think such negative connotations with marijuana when millions of doctors are prescribing it to people that are very ill, have lost their appetite, were in pain, anxiety, depression, who I know firsthand have been offered due to cancer and other ailments like that. If marijuana is as harmful as people are saying they are tonight, then why are doctors prescribing to patients? Why did our country legalize it? I've wanted to never use marijuana, but I've done my research and I've taken my blinders off. I've only seen the benefits of marijuana until opening up a legally-regulated, safe dispensary, which will create a more safe use in our community. As far as worries about the children of the community, I understand. They're the number-one priority, and I have three nieces and two nephews in Webster. I would do nothing to ever put them in harm's way or put them in an unsafe environment. This dispensary is just like a liquor store in our town or any of the bars or restaurants that serve alcohol to adults twenty-one and over. This dispensary would not sell to minors. Minors cannot enter the dispensary, and they cannot buy from the store. There are a lot of people that are concerned about the minors that can get into the stores and they just cannot. They're also worried about the fact that spread middle school and children are around this community, but so is Berry's and the Coach and Jojo's and the bait shop, which would actually be closer to the spread middle school than this dispensary would. And I know that people are concerned about marijuana in homes, that their children could get their hands on it. It is the parents' and guardians' responsibility, just like alcohol, to lock up marijuana, to put it in a safe place, just so they don't have their vodka, their tequila, their beer, or anything else. I thank you so much for your consideration and your time. I believe marijuana is best for our town and to provide just our community to be a safer community. I am in favor of opening up a legally-regulated dispensary, and I thank you for your time.
It's like the ones that don't tell me to lick.
It just kills me, it's so loud, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody.
You don't have to move it, I can just, I don't think you have to.
It's very, it can pick you up, and also this one's picking you up, so you don't have to move it.
Okay, most exciting part of the night right there.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tom McEwen, a resident of Webster. Grew up here, spent my whole life here. And it is a pleasure to speak here tonight. I do wanna start off by saying that I am in favor of allowing the retail dispensary here in Webster, and there are a few reasons for that. I would start off by saying, at the first meeting that we had, this public hearing here, we heard a lot about statistics, about the effects of marijuana, but at the end of the day, we are really not talking about the legality of marijuana, we're talking about the safe access to marijuana. And there is a big difference there that we need to emphasize. We've heard there's a concern about youth being exposed to marijuana, and that a location in Webster is too close to our middle schools. But that does not stop the bar around the corner from having a giant poster of Jameson in their windows. I don't know about any of you, but as it gets a little bit colder out, that picture of a Corona on the sand in the beach down in the Caribbean looks more and more exciting. And we're not doing anything to limit those images from being displayed in front of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders walking home that live in the Village. There are so many effects and statistics around alcohol, and that is not being mentioned or discussed. Not to mention, there is far less security at bars right here in the Village than there would be at the facility. You are not allowed to enter this facility if you are not over the age of twenty-one. I can go into the gas station right over here and walk in, go right up to those beer coolers without being ID'd. A number of the bars in the area that I've been to before I was twenty-one, spending my whole life in Webster, I was able to go into those at eighteen, nineteen years old. Was never once ID'd. I was feet away from alcohol, never once ID'd. When we think about bars, what do we do in bars? We sit there, we catch up with our friends, we have a well-deserved drink. There's a lot of hard-working people in Webster, right? Everyone deserves a chance to unwind. Are we not far more likely to drink and drive than we are to purchase marijuana from a facility where you cannot sit in a lounge in that facility? You're not smoking in the facility or in the parking lot. You're purchasing the product and you are leaving, not under the influence. I know we're coming close on time, so I would just wrap this up by saying, you know, are we gonna have a public hearing to talk about removing alcohol from Webster? Arguably, there are more negative effects to alcohol than there is marijuana, but we're not gonna do that. Because this country, that I truly do believe is the greatest country in the world, right? We distinguish ourselves from other nations in the world in a belief in freedom, and that includes the freedom of choice. And this facility in Webster gives residents an opportunity to make a safe choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
After this, I will open it up to people who wish to speak.
My name's Peter D'Amico, seven oh five Webster Road. I just wanna say that I am for opening up the dispensary in Webster. Just for the security aspect of it, there will be a security guard at the door IDing any of that comes in. And then there is a second form of IDing at the counter before you can even purchase any of the cannabis that's gonna be sold at the dispensary. I personally went to a lot of different cultivators and processors to see their product and what they're growing. And you just gotta see these places, they're unbelievably clean. Everything is sent out for third-party testing. All of their product is checked out. But we just wanna deliver a safe product to our community, and I'll open it up. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the board?
Good evening, Lexi Popovich, forty-two Jared Street, Rochester, New York. As a tobacco control advocate with American Lung Association and the Director of the Smoking Health Action Coalition of Livingston and Monroe Counties, I'm here to reiterate the importance to not repeal the previous law. We're urging the Board to consider waiting longer until they gather more information before making a decision to repeal. The ongoing delays with state oversight and guidance have had a direct impact on local government decision-making, and this has created many local uncertainties, especially for regulating time, place, and manner. With the previous lack of clarity on regulations and requirements, we believe it is imperative to wait to have a clearer picture of what retail operations will look like in other municipalities and communities locally. Although legal dispensaries ensure a more pure and safe cultivation method and harvesting process, we hope the Board does take into consideration the importance of safeguarding our youth and young adults here in Webster, especially when there are multiple youth-centered locations, such as schools in the Village. As with tobacco, stores that are within a thousand feet of youth-centered locations, youth are actually more likely to use these products, even with a purchasing age of twenty-one. Keeping cannabis dispensaries away from schools not only reduces youth exposure and youth access, but it can reduce the overall density of these dispensaries in our county. People who begin using marijuana before the age of eighteen are more likely to develop a marijuana use disorder than adults. legal retail dispensaries, but for now, we are urging the board to collect any and all information necessary and wait to see how other municipalities oversee this regulation, as this is critical because this decision is not reversible. As a public health organization, our aim is always to protect the health and safety of all adolescents, especially from potential substance use risk in our community. I want to thank the board for their continued diligence on this matter, and to please reach out with any further questions on the matter. Thank you.
My name is George Keever Heather. I know you know how to spell that. I'm a Monroe County legislator for District Fifteen, which represents about forty-three percent of Webster. I've been in that position for eight years, and I'm gonna start out by saying, please don't fool yourselves, board members. Allowing a dispensary to open in Webster is a very bad idea, especially at this time. Life has taught me to follow the money whenever I want to know what's really going on, and legalization of marijuana has been an issue at our state government level for many years, finally being passed into law in March of 2021 and signed by our governor shortly thereafter. The structure of the law thoroughly demonstrated the intent of our state lawmakers, which was to coerce towns and villages into signing on to hosting dispensaries by providing them a kind of revenues to be generated. Those numbers have come up already tonight. In my view, and the view of many of the other people who will be voting in your next elections, agreeing to host a dispensary in the village is simply a money grab. Think otherwise, it's to fool yourself. Why do I say this? The cost of resulting addiction will be borne by the county. County government is required by the state to cover and provide support for addicted residents. Numbers from other states that have already legalized this show that there will be additional addicted residents, despite what you guys are saying. And by the way, I'm not up here to knock what you're saying, but when you look at the study, when you look at something, see who's funding it. Did the results come out the way that funder might have wanted? Because I've done that. I've been involved in this stuff for eight years. I am a member of WEN as well. And the bottom line is that supporters who prefer to call it cannabis, it's not, they claim it'll claim it's not a gateway drug, although none of them did that here tonight, but medical studies too numerous to mention clearly prove that it is indeed a gateway drug. Today's marijuana THC levels are up to thirty times stronger than those of us on, you know, my age. And I know in college, you know, guys would, gals would smoke. I went to a pretty much all-male college, and I didn't. But users who seek an ever-greater high will in fact move on to riskier substances like cocaine, methamphetamines, and opioids. Recent research estimated approximately three in ten people who use marijuana before age eighteen increase their risk for developing marijuana use disorder. For kids under eighteen, those numbers go even higher. I will admit, dispensaries provide safer access to cannabis products, no question about it. But let me tell you something that isn't gonna change. There will still be a black market, and there will be a black market because that's why the state's doing this. They want to grab more money. There is a substantial tax, where's the lady that runs the place? You know what I'm talking about. You're paying a tax to produce the stuff, to sell the stuff. A lot of people talk about alcohol. Alcohol, yep. Kids don't drink alcohol, right? Because they can't go into the bars. Oh, wait a minute. What if that twenty-one-year-old has an eighteen-year-old brother who has a fourteen-year-old friend? That doesn't happen, right? Never happens like that. No matter where you place a dispensary in the village, and there will be many of them, it'll be close to a school, or a youth center, or someplace that youth frequent. What are you doing when you say it's okay to have a legal dispensary? You're saying government thinks this is an okay idea. Jeez, maybe, maybe I wouldn't have tried it before because mom and dad are against it, but you know, Joe's doing it, Sally's doing it. Why don't I just give it a try and see how it goes? And I firmly believe, without proof, that addiction is very much genetically driven. Some people have a predisposition to being more easily addicted than others. When I had a shoulder replacement, they gave me Oxycodone. Didn't know it, took it, said, "What the hell is this doing to me?", and stopped immediately. All right? And I will summarize, I'm almost on the last page, which is that long. All right? So keep this stuff away from our youth. I volunteered in the youth organizations since I was seventeen years old. And let me tell you something, this is fellow Lexington official, although my term is up at the end of the year and I am not running, and I don't miss the campaigning at all. Voters may or may not be paying attention today, but I think from this turnout, you can tell they are. But my constituents and your constituents are smart. They will see predictions like I made tonight come to reality, and they will seek to replace those who vote in favor of any action to legalize dispensary in Webster, especially when you don't know what the state office of cannabis management, by the way, I've met with the director multiple times, knows what, they haven't passed the rules. You talk about zoning laws? Last year, the state was ready to override zoning laws if you didn't build enough houses. Thank you very much. Please vote.
My name's Salvatore Dimico. I live at 119 East Ave, East Rochester, New York, and I currently own a business, 205 North Ave, Peter Gunn Auto Sales and leasing ag for one of one hundred and twenty registered importers in the country to import vehicles, anything with a motor, wheels, we can import it, if it complies the NHTSA and DOT safety standards. So I'm very, very, very familiar with rules and compliance and regulations. I deal, you know, directly with NHTSA, DOT, and these government agencies. They see me fit to do something like that, and the state also approved me through the card program to see fit that I open a retail dispensary. I'm not gonna come up here with these fancy statistics and numbers and all these things that try and sway you. I started this process because my family's owned property in Webster for over thirty-five years, which probably, you know, half of it sits vacant and empty right now because they can't find tenants to move in. I mean, they can't even give it away at five cents a square foot. And when I go to other municipalities, other towns, I see their strong-arming, you know, dispensary people with licenses or provisional approvals with, you know, these high prices per square foot, or they just, you know, don't want to sell, they just want to leverage everything. So we have property that's, you know, multiple property that's in the village, directly in the village, right next door to here, and we also have 205 North Ave. We picked deliberately to put it over there. That's where we would like it to be, on 205 North Ave. And I, I'm an advocate of, you know, of safety and education and not allowing kids to have access to these products. I grow, I grew up firsthand being subjected to substances. My mother was an alcoholic growing up. I saw how destructive it was for my household. You know, my sister moved out, left me with my mom in 2009, and I was living with her, and I just, up until recently, stopped supporting her financially, you know? So I, pretty much my whole young adult life, I've supported my mother. And from the failed, you know, justice system, based on marijuana that I grew when I was fifteen years old, she got the charges from it and ruined her, and ruined her complete life from it. But I don't see anybody really talking about accountability, people's accountability for things. Yes, you can get these products, you can get alcohol, you can go and get drugs, you can go get guns, anything, but there's no accountability. People aren't being held accountable, whether it's themselves or their kids. You know, my mother dropped the ball, you know? And I've had so many hurdles and speed bumps in my life, and I'm still here going. Four out of five of my friends, four out of five of my total friends have fallen from addiction to addiction or died from overdose. And I had every chance to be one of those people using those drugs. I chose not to because I have accountability for myself, and I think that's where it falls down to. You know, there's a discussion of whether they can get access, children and all that. I think it's a totally different discussion. I saw, I started this process, like I said, and I want to see it through because I would like to put, you know, I'd like to have a successful business in a property that my family's owned for thirty-five years, thirty-five-plus years. And I'm here to do the right thing, to say to the community that I'm here to do the right thing, and I want to comply with every rules and regulations that you guys come up with. I've done it so far, and I'm more than willing to sit down and you guys make the rules and I follow. That's just how it goes, and I'm a firm believer in that. And anybody that works with me, I employ over five people at my shop and at Peter Gunn Auto Sales. I'm a stickler when it comes to rules. I like following the rules, and that's just how I am. So when it comes down to that, it's up to, you know, representatives to lay out these things so we can follow them properly. And so, thank you guys for the time.
I just wanted to say that some of the people said that it would be a five, six. The board can make it, they have it one square mile. Our building is in industrial area. It's not in a residential area. So if they, if you choose to, you could put it one square mile, and there won't be a lot of stores, there's no place, no place to rent. You could do that, they did it fairly. That's what I gotta say.
If not, then I will, I will close the public hearing at this time, Day Twelve. Thank you for all of your comments, participation. The board will consider them.